Down here, man.
I can hear my attention for this common council agenda for the city of Honeyburg.
Here.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we're in pursuit of that.
Your Father, God, thank you for those that are gathered here today and in the interest of their community. We ask that the actions that are put here today by our council are actions that benefit all of you and all of our community. For all these things, we ask in your presence, amen.
Amen.
Got a copy of the minutes? Need a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve the minutes, is that it?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First thing on the agenda, this morning, the Board of Public Works considered the addition of Christopher Russ to the list of approved firefighters. Right now, that 29 firefighters should be at 30. Christopher actually went through training, lives in school, in high school, has been working alongside, stayed with a close relationship with the chief and the other members. And I know Glenn probably knows him, but we did want to run that by the council day and ask for your approval of adding Christopher Russ to the list of approved firefighters.
The ordinance for the firefighting, fire, volunteer fire department requires that volunteer firemen can be appointed by the mayor from an approved list approved by the council.
I'll make a motion to approve. Mr. Russ?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have similar, we have right now, Police Chief Brad Kramer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This morning, I asked for permission from the Board of Public Works to come to you guys to request permission to hire Jake Begley as a reserve officer with us. Jake was a senior back in 2021. He graduated in 21, but that was when he did his intern with us. He's from Ferdinand Forest Park High School. He graduated from VUJ over at Jasper with a law enforcement degree. The whole time while he was in attending VUJ, he did work for the Community Correction Center, which is where he works at today as a field officer. Jake has showed tremendous interest in becoming an officer somewhere in our community, whether it be here, Jasper, the county, Ferdinand, whatever. I just want to be a part of that stepping stone for him, to get him and started on the right path. So I'm asking for permission to hire him as a reserve officer. This will take us up to seven. We did have, I think, eight at one time, but we hired one full-time and then we had a couple resign here recently, last couple of months, so.
Similarly, the mayor appoints reserve officers from the list approved by the council. No question. I'll make a motion to approve Jake Begley on the force.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys.
Before we get to John Rudipower here, I just want to say for some of you that came a little later, we did announce earlier, we do have citizens items at the end of the discussion on the mid-states corridor. We're going to limit three people to speak for each side, three minutes each. We did spend a lot of meeting time last time with the mid-states people, but we'll go ahead. So decide who you want to speak for and against. Right now, well, those proponents of it will go first, opponents will go second, and then they'll have an opportunity to consider the two resolutions before them, realizing that we do have one member have some jet bounds today, so. And when you speak, come to the podium, give your name, and speak. So, all right, now, John.
Good afternoon, council. Just got a few items. I'd like to recommend the approval to amend the ordinance 2024-21 for the gas welding stipend for year 2025. The increase will keep the gas welding position competitive with the other gas utilities. I did put a couple of examples of who we have to have weld, like the IARC during, due to federal regulations, we got to have them come over and weld if we don't have our own welder. And that's the rates we have to pay for travel. And then another local gas utility, they have a welder. So whenever they weld, they get an extra amount for the time they weld, but that becomes a paper trail nightmare. So the stipend that is being presented, I think is pretty fair. The gas welding position is very important to the gas department in case we have an emergency leak on our steel mains or services. You know, we don't have to wait for somebody to come all the way from Illinois. I think it's very important to keep a gas welder in our gas system. And right now, we have 148 miles of gas main, which 66 miles of it is steel. We got over 1,900 steel gas services, plus all the businesses and all the meter sets, the steel meter sets we got to weld up. So I think it's very important that we stay competitive and maintain a gas welder. There's a lot of welders out there, but fine welders to weld on live gas, dealing with federal regulations, all the online training you got to do. You send in samples every six months, they test them to destruction. If the pipe fails, if the weld fails before the pipe fails, you fail, then you got to retake it. I think it's very important. And we've had the welder for several, several years, and he's never had a failure yet. So I think it's very important to keep that position and to stay competitive.
This is when he's welding only?
Pardon?
Is that when he's welding only?
No. The stipend?
Yes.
That's just straight 40 hours.
It's at a desired rate. So you have a proposal ordinance that would increase the hourly stipend for certified welder from $3.04 per hour to $6.08 per hour in order to make this compensation competitive with other people in the industry. He's spending what percent of time welding? Over 70, over 80?
It varies week to week, but maybe 70.
He's done, he's very talented individual.
Yeah.
Maybe the fraud's going to save the city of town money.
Just one meter set for a company was, took three to four days just to weld up the meter set. Because everything's got to be precise, level.
You know where I stand. Yeah, it's, it is very, that work is critiqued and critiqued and critiqued by everybody in there. Finally, they change the rules on you over and over again.
Heavily regulated by the federal guidelines.
And he's finding that individual to even consider that job is tough.
Hard.
And we had him off one week and had a two-hour, it was about two-hour job.
Had a small, small gas leak and it, like $2,000 to have somebody come over from Illinois and weld.
Yeah, for something that's, yeah, would've took hours in the afternoon, so, yeah.
I think it's just an important position for the gas utility this size to maintain.
So do we want to consider ordinance to amend the, what is it?
We got to introduce it, right?
Yeah, you can introduce it. Is there an ordinance?
There's an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance.
Yeah, I have.
Oh, I don't have it, okay.
I'm sorry.
You can get one.
We'll need a presentation. It's ordinance number 2024-1.
Well, that was the, that's the ordinance, it's amended. We need a new ordinance number for 2025.
We're amending last year's.
Right, we're amending last year's ordinance. It's ordinance 2025-15.
I'll make a motion to introduce the number, ordinance 2025-15.
I'll second. We have first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If you choose, you can suspend the rules by unanimous consent and consider it on the same, at the same evening or meeting in which it's introduced.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion spent, one, two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion to adopt.
We move to adopt.
Second motion to adopt. Okay, we got a first and a second to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we need a real call? Kissing, bounds, McFerrin.
Aye.
Multi. Ware.
Aye.
Four I's, one abs. Motion carries. Thank you.
And one other item, I'd like to get approval for the census three-phase meters from Core Main. It's a majority of our three phases. We're going to be getting in 123 meters, $79,000, $71.78. Core Main is the only vendor allowed to sell that meter in this area. So that's why I only have one quote.
It's always a struggle for me.
Because I think we've been through this. What the situation is, it pretty much.
It's territorial.
We have to go to this, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I've got a first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Should do it.
Thanks, Johnson, the budget, by the way. Transit Director April Blessinger. Carrie, you gonna be okay to get up there?
I think so. Thank you. I emailed or added to your notes a request for approval for continuing reduced summer rates for students from the time school gets out until they go back. We've been doing this for a long time now, and I didn't realize that it could potentially be a problem. So Tom brought it to my attention, and I talked to Phil, and we need to get it approved, so.
So late this afternoon, there was an ordinance, draft ordinance, added to community to amend the schedule of fees for labor transit to farm. The only fee that's being changed is the summer student rate. It's going to a dollar per student for one-way transfer, and a round trip is $2. The typical fare is $1.50 one-way, $3 for round trip, and $1 for each additional stop. So you can see, this ordinance would set forth a new schedule of rates.
Some of this is for children that are attending some of our summer programs and
Correct.
Other events, going to the pool.
Right, we're taking a kid's place. We're taking them, so far this summer, they've gone to Leagues Stadium, they've gone to the pool, they go to the teen outback for the library program. It's pretty much all affiliated with the city, so.
This is a fee that's been
It benefits the kids.
For a number of years, we just need to formally adopt it and keep it going here.
Okay. Is there a, is there a date range this works in, or just?
I was telling Phil, it's
It says summer break, I mean.
Right.
Whatever schools.
Summer programs. We've been taking the cheerleaders out for, you know, at the school as well, football team, whoever needs a ride. I took flyers out, gave them to Mr. Beening, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he passed them out to all the coaches, and we've had a lot of kids that are riding. Parents really appreciate that.
I think that as a parent, I appreciate it. I see the trains at buses a lot, and it's like, geez, I should utilize it more.
It's not a big difference, it's just a little difference, but it's still a reduced rate for the kids and.
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Great opportunity for them.
And it allows a lot of kids to participate when they probably otherwise wouldn't have, so.
When their parents are at work, they don't have to worry about how they're going to get there.
Right.
It's great service, thank you.
It's an ordinance.
Do you have a number?
2025-16. So the motion to introduce?
We move to introduce ordinance 2025-16.
I'll second it.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Got a motion to suspend the rules in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to get a motion to adopt. Okay, we got a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
And a second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Kissing.
Aye.
Bounds. McFerrin.
Aye.
Multi.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Four I's, one abs.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I had one other thing. We received our new 2026 van yesterday. It's really nice. It's parked out here. I'm going to have it out there running, so you guys can check it out after this meeting. We will be selling, turning in one of our other vehicles. It's a 2012. We had a transmission rebuilt a couple of years ago in that vehicle, but it's been costing us a lot of money. So we're planning on selling it, and the market value for that one is like $8,500. So we'll put that towards.
Carrie, before we start, can we take the sticker outside the door? I still see the one we sold before, run it around. Sticker's still on there.
Somehow remove that or cover it up.
I wanted to mention, that new van, they had told me it was going to be $139,000 last year, $139,575. And so I asked for $27,915, and it ended up being $123,671. So our local match is just going to be $18,551. They ended up, the FTA with the grant that I wrote, they paid 85% instead of 80. So we're only, you know, expected to pay the 15, which I felt like, that's almost $10,000, you know?
Good job.
Yeah.
Good job, thank you.
We happy about that. So want to let you know what was going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have any items from City Attorney, Ethel Schneider? Anything from Court Treasurer, Tom Dippel?
No.
All right, we're going to ask now if any of those, I know we have a lot of people here, regarding the mid-states, for those that are for the mid-states, if you're going to, we'll let you go first here. We're going to, I say three minutes, give it three minutes and 10 seconds or whatever, we're not going to cut you off. But we do want to just, I guess the point is, is keep it fairly brief, so, because we do have a, I don't want everybody here speaking. We discussed it as a, as a group here before the meeting of how we're going to handle it. So what we want you to do is come to the podium, state your name, and read what it is that you need to read, or say what you need to say. This is being recorded, as well as we have JTF here with their recording up here, too. So that's why we want you to come up to the podium so we can hear you better. So anybody that's proponents of the mid-states, whoever wants to go first?
Okay, my name is Hank Minkie. I think most of you know me. I'm living, a residence now of Honeyburg, Indiana, which is kind of fun. Anyway, want to know that I've been here currently as a residence for 65 years. I've been a part of this community, and it's been in my heart and soul, this community. I'm currently president and CEO of Oifest Brands. I've, we've been, I've been now a part of the company for almost 48 years, now president and CEO at 43 years. I'm the third generation in our family to be in this business, with my four children now in the fourth generation, and they've blessed me with 12 grandchildren, which is pretty special to have that kind of lantage going, going in. In two years from now, in 19 and 2027, we're going to be celebrating our 90th birthday, which you're all going to be invited for that. But anyway, the facts are this. Total, our total employer count right now locally is 1,500 people, of which 31% of those people come from outside of DuBois County, live outside the community, and come traveling every day to our factories. Our total payroll is about $100 million currently annually that we pay out. Donations for DuBois County average about a quarter of a million dollars a year. For Cool Springs, those things we do for not-for-profit out there, is another $150,000 per year that we do. And the plan is that in the next tier and years, we want to double in size. It's the way we're running right now currently and where we hope to go. We currently running about 185 tractors that we distribute our products, and that's both contract, residential, and hospitality all over the country, including Canada. And you can imagine, and we also want to know that we pay actually 1.4 million in local taxes that comes in, so. So I feel very good about that. And most of you know that we've been very much involved in just about any project that goes on in Honeyburg, whether it's Market Street, whether it's the Old Town Hall, whether it's Honeyburg itself, whether it's Southridge Athletics or whatever, we're always involved in that, whether it's Fairmount Cemetery, whether it's a signage coming in out of Honeyburg, we're all part of that thing. And again, I want it to be known, too, is important that people in our community to understand that our local industry is not a special interest group, is a group that we are in support of funding and needs of this local community. We've always been a part of that, and we always will be, as far as I'm concerned, as far as my family's concerned. I am, you know, again, proud to be a citizen and employer of DuBois County. I, you know, I love the fact that this county is entrepreneurial and risk-taking in attitude, best-in-class in the school system. I'm very proud of that. I'm very talented with a workforce that we have got in this area. And I love, what I love most about this thing is the family atmosphere that is generated in DuBois County, which I'm particularly fond of. And again, I'm very proud of the fact that we always continuously have, like, right now, currently a 2.8% unemployment. Again, I want to say this, that 231 has served us well in the last 100 years. This thing was built in 1930 with horses and mules and whatever was built, and it has served us well. And back then, I kind of looked at the population at that time, 1930, and versus '25. Honeyburg was 3,440, you know, people. Today, it's seven, close to 7,000 people. Jasper was 3,00905, okay, and today it's about 17,000. So anyways, it's gone up tremendously. 231 will not serve us in the next 100 years. It will not. This quarter not only will benefit the industry economically, safety-wise, competitiveness wise, but it will benefit the citizens of Honeyburg as well as DuBois County. We have to remain competitive if we're going to be, if we're going to continue to keep industry here and going. It's important. As you all know, anytime one of us drive from here, from south of Honeyburg to north of Jasper, it's a, it's a 40-minute trip. By the time you go through 18 stoplights, that, with trucks idling at every stop sign, which environmentally is not right. Again, I'm thinking of the possibilities of what could happen. I mean, you think about us today and where we go. When you go to Louisville today, if it wasn't for Interstate 64, so, and then the, and the sacrifices that were made along Interstate 64, people, land, our homes, land, whatever, displaced. But we get on today, we drive to Louisville in less than an hour and a half, we don't even think about it. We go to Evansville in 45 minutes, we don't even think about it. We now go to Nashville in two and a half hours or less. We need this road in our south. We need to be able to get accessibility to Indianapolis. We need to be able to be, which in this quarter, said and done, would be less than two hours to Indianapolis. We can be able to take advantage of the airport up there. It services direct flights versus not going to Louisville or Evansville and going to Chicago or Evansville, and another hop on another plane. But we need that, and also the connectivity for international flights as well. We also need that quarter to come and help crane. There's no reason why DuBois County can't be a supporter. They got 7,000 PhD engineers, high-paying jobs. There's no reason why they can't live in DuBois County and support crane and all the things that are going on, on there. And again, these sacrifices are very important, environmentally are good, but safety-wise, I want to say one last thing, one last thing, and I think it's very important. Well, I had a chief engineer, this is in December 15th of 2000 or 1990, Rick Niehaus, that was taking, went home to get his wife to come back and to our staff party. And it was a snowy, icy day, and between Dave Ring's property and the airport, he got caught with a swinging trailer and was decapitated. And I still have got that in plan in my mind because I had to go identify him and also make the call to his wife. 231 is not a safe road, period. Thank you.
We are, we are tracking time. We're giving everybody extra, right, same amount of time.
Seven minutes?
We got it. I've got it written down here. You get seven, two, then. We'll give you time there. Yes, we will. Everybody get equal time.
Thanks. Colton Pippen, I'm the Executive Director of DuBois Strongly Economic Development for the county. Mr. Minkie went a little long, so I'll go a little short and try and catch us up a little bit. But a lot of the questions that I receive and conversations that I have really revolve around, you know, look what happens in other communities. Can you give us an example? What really is truly coming from some of these places that do it? So, you know, I looked at population over time, and population's a big thing that gets brought up a lot. In 2000, in DuBois County, there was about 39,868 residents. In 2024, it's 43,629. So a nine-and-a-half percent increase almost in population. So as you look through some of the things like the hunting report, and we really look through, you know, what's the population growth for the county, it's really at 5%, 6% year-over-year over a 10-year period. So, you know, it's not unheard of for the county and this population to grow and increase in those numbers. The other big piece, that I went and pulled some data from the US Census Bureau around Dale, Kokomo, Martinsville, those are three that I commonly hear a lot. And I pulled median household income, all of which from 2010 to 2023, the most recent year, all of those are trending upwards as those roads start to be completed. I looked at poverty status and poverty rates, you know, some of these Kokomos up at 20%, and now they're down to, you know, almost 15% poverty rate. So as things start to trend and new opportunities emerge, it really does show some economic impact. And then lastly, unemployment percent for population over 16 and above, you know, places are starting at 3%, 6%, 7%, 8% unemployment, and now they're down, you know, about 4%, 5%, 3%. And I'm happy to share all this information with everyone, and I'll release this, this afternoon to the press as well. But really, this trends and each of those kind of three big economic indicators really tell the story. You know, through US 231 in Spencer County, Dale gets brought up a lot, but in reality, with inflation-adjusted dollar, their median household income's going up, their unemployment's going down, their poverty rates are going down, and we can replicate some of that here. What really happens is it opens up a new corridor for economic activity, it opens up more resources. And Mr. Minkie's a great example of a local company investing in local initiatives. And that's really what makes the difference. As more companies look, they can go anywhere in the world, they can go anywhere in the US for the most part. It's a lot of supplier-driven, it's a lot of logistics, it's a lot of people. We have people, we have resources, we have power, we have the ability to do this, and this is going to open up. We talk a lot about property taxes, we talk a lot about business taxes. When you have local companies investing in local people with local payroll, that impact just continues to spiral, continues to grow, and it really just opens up this county for more opportunities for the future. As Mr. Minkie said, it really opens up a north access to Indianapolis. It connects Indianapolis all the way north, all the way down south to Bowling Green and Louisville, and so with I-64, opens up Nashville market. It opens up these markets and these abilities for companies to come here, start here, grow here. And I'll leave it with that, since we're a little short on time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think as we approach this, excuse me, I'm Mark Schrader. I'm here tonight as Chairman of the RDA. David Drake is also on the board. David, I guess unofficially represents the Honeyburg area on the, on the RDA board. So, so I'm speaking for the RDA. What we had hoped to do in the time we thought we had was to talk a little bit about, we need to deal with the facts, not accusations, not made-up numbers. In that light, I've got a handout that I think most In that light, I've got a handout that I think most of you may have received by email, but that would, that talks about, quite honestly, the opposition's resolution and clarifies some points relative to what is said in that. And for full disclosure for everyone involved, we have more extra copies, if anyone here would like some, they'll be up front. As I said, I am here representing the RDA. Just as a little bit of background, and I believe all of you on the council, maybe with the exception of Pam, were on the council when you voted in August 2017 to form the RDA and when the board was appointed by the elected representatives of the government members in May of 2018. Now, in spite of what you may have seen on social media or in letters to the editor, the formation of the RDA certainly wasn't unconstitutional, and the structure's very similar to what you utilize in various boards and commissions while, where members are appointed by elected officials. In essence, the RDA board members serve at the pleasure of the government members and work for you, the elected officials. You know, since that appointment in 2018, the RDA board has worked diligently to do what you charged us to do in terms of working within NDOT and on behalf of the RDA members to complete the NEPA studies, which will determine the federal highway stringent, under the federal highway stringent rules, what is the best overall alternative to address north-south connectivity in the region and more specifically in Dubois County. You know, that NEPA Tier One study was completed in September of '23, and it established preferred alternative for the new corridor and outlined four separate sections of independent utility along the route. The Tier Two study for Dubois County portion of the corridor was initiated in July of last year and will identify facility type and exact right-of-way location. The draft findings for that study are currently expected to be available next fall. And I really wanted to share that with you because I want to assure you that despite the claims of the opposition leadership, the findings of these studies are not corrupted, and they are solely based on NEPA guidelines, which are the result of years of experience by both NDOT and federal highway. Study findings have not been influenced by the RDA or any other party, and as a participating agency, the RDA board members are under the same conflict of interest policy as all NDOT employees and NDOT contractors. Additionally, the RDA can only be an advocate for what has been determined by the study, and therefore, we are not advocating at this time for a specific facility type. And I want to note on record that we're specifically disclaiming any endorsement of a four-lane expressway that is referenced in the resolution that you have in front of you. And that's the recommended facility type for the Dubois County portion will be determined by the Tier Two study. So with that front end, I ask you, as you consider the two resolutions before you this evening, why would you consider withdrawing your support when you're this close to finishing the completion of the Tier Two study relative to Dubois County? You know, what's changed? Certainly, the traffic issues in our community haven't improved during these past eight years. And that study will give you very important information that you need to have relative to your comprehensive plans. I think, you know, we do a good job planning in Dubois County, I think. Ferdinand, Jasper, Honeyburg, and the county are all having comprehensive plans out there. You need this study. You know, there's a, there's a saying in planning that failing, planning to fail, failing to plan is planning to fail. So thank you for what you do. And so, you know, to the essence of why we're here, you know, we understand, I understand that everyone's concerned about those potentially impacted by the new road. But the reality is that unless we're satisfied to indefinitely live with the inadequate north-south infrastructure currently in place, this issue isn't going away. The opposition leadership repeatedly states we should just improve existing 231. Putting a Band-Aid on the existing roadway with a few improvements here and there won't help. The Tier One study did include a no-build option and fully considered trying to fix the issues by doing what would be needed on the existing 231. That approach sounds good, it sells well, but it doesn't work. The preferred route was chosen because it has a relatively low number of impacts and had the highest overall performance of all the options. The improvement of existing 231 had the highest number of relocation impacts, about three times the preferred alternative, and the lowest performance of all the options. You know, I wish, I know as you do, there was an option that wouldn't, wouldn't impact anyone else, just about there, but there's, but that's not possible. Whatever we do, it will unfortunately impact those residents along the route regardless of the route chosen. As leaders, it is our duty to pursue a course of action that minimizes adverse impacts on individuals while maximizing overall outcomes for the majority of our residents. That's exactly the approach taken by the Federal Highway Administration's NEPA studies, which was the basis for the selection of the preferred route. So in closing, I'm here this evening on behalf of the RDA asking you to support the continuing resolution reaffirming the council's historical support for the Midstates Corridor project. We're not here asking you to decide about any relinquishment matters. We're not here to ask you to make any decisions about future funding. We're just allowing, asking you to allow the RDA to finish what you originally asked us to do in terms of facilitating the required federal highway NEPA studies within the region. Thank you for your consideration.
So we've got a total of 17 minutes that we'll allow. Thank you, Mark. Whoever wants to pick to run here. May I? You can go first.
Councilmembers, mayor, thank you.
By the way, we knew everybody would go over a little bit, so we thought we did three, you'd take five or six.
Hoosiers.
Yeah.
So my name is Jason McCoy. I'm a resident of Martin County. I own property and businesses in Dubois County. I've got a lot to cram into, three-plus minutes, I'll get right to it. So for over 40 years, your constituents have patently rejected this new road. It's been tried and tried, studied and studied. Five studies previous to the current one said that it wasn't viable, that it wasn't fiscally responsible, that it was a bad idea. Undaunted, those in favor of the road continued to pursue it, and only through Mike Braun and Mark Messmer's writing of Senate Bill 128, which took the power and the opinion out of these people's hands and placed it directly into what I consider to be a corrupt regional development authority, in my opinion, did this project gain some ground again. With regard to the regional development authority, California, right now, after 20 years of grift, corruption, and unethical business practices on the part of RDA and their, and members, they banned all their RDAs. I don't believe that in a few years from now that an RDA will be allowed to exist here. I heard Mr. Schroder, and I heard Hank Minkie talk about, the RDA is not corrupt, there's nothing wrong with it. Anybody, I don't need a doctorate of jurisprudence to look at German American Bank's stock value before Senate Bill 128 and German American Bank's stock value after Senate Bill 128. My, I'm a capitalist, I'm a right-wing conservative Republican, I'm all about the money, okay? But when you have people on the RDA board who control these people's lives, have a huge stake in whether or not this road gets built, and they have an enormous amount of power, they shouldn't, there should not be a conflict of interest, right? German American Bank and its board of directors have been pushing for this road, no big deal, right? But those people shouldn't be sitting on the regional development authority, they should be in no positions of power whatsoever. You don't put the person who controls all the sand and the gravel and the concrete and the pavement in charge of whether or not this road gets built. You don't do that. You don't, you don't put David Drake, who's, you know, according to his Facebook profile, a $6 billion coal mining magnate, controlling all the heavy, heavy equipment. It screams grift, it screams conflict of interest, it screams corruption. It was never supported for 40 years, and it only is now because of Senate Bill 128, because Hank and Mike want it, they want the road. Mr. Schroder's assertion that 231 just doesn't cut it, NDOT says 231's at 24% capacity. I live on 231. My family's had ground along 231 for 120 years, right? There's not a problem with 231. The Hunden study, the Hunden Corporation is a marketing firm. We can't look at one study and say, well, yeah, the Hunden people say that it should be there, so it should be there. The overwhelming majority of your constituents, I'm at four minutes now?
Yeah.
The overwhelming majority, thank you. The overwhelming majority of your constituents are vehemently opposed to this road. I want to talk just briefly, just real, real briefly about the RDA. You know, in court the other day, Jason DuPont testified in Judge Verkham's court that they were commissioned to do a study that would affect 13 counties, yet only Spencer County and Dubois County have representation on the RDA. When Martin County, the county that I live in, was asked if they could join, right? They said, if you'll play ball. They met in secret in the basement of German American Bank, right, the commissioners, and they were told by members of the RDA, three, two of whom are sitting in this room right now, yeah, we'll let you be on the RDA as long as you don't oppose the road. To me, that screams corruption. As far as following the NEPA guidelines, in my opinion, the Lockmiller Group is in no way following the NEPA guidelines. Peel back the curtain just a little bit, look into that, you'll see. They've been hired to give Hank and Mike the result that they desire and that they want, okay? Everyone in favor of this road, and then I'll close with this, everyone in favor of this road right now is under public indictment, right? Every elected official right now who's in favor of this is under public indictment, okay? I won't be satisfied until the people behind this are under criminal indictment. I'll say one more thing. Mr. Schroder said, what's changed? What's changed between then and now? Mike Braun and Mark Messmer slipped Senate Bill 128 in on us. Now, that's on us. Every single person here is responsible for who we vote into office. Mark says, we don't live in a democracy, we live in a representative republic. You don't get to vote for what you want. You elect somebody and then they decide what's best for you, and we were all asleep at the wheel, okay? But now people aren't asleep anymore. This is a, this is a very small amount of people that are here right now. The overwhelming majority of your constituents aren't going to have it, they're simply not going to have it. Thank you. For the record, my comments are solely mine and are my opinions, I don't represent anyone else here today, for the record.
Thank you. So we're at six minutes and 11 seconds, is where we're at. Anybody who else would like to, I know we have some people. Thank you, by the way. I knew you would.
No, I'm, I'm going to be Mark Nowatarski with the Property Rights Alliance and the Coalition Against the Midstates Corridor. I'm going to be very brief. First of all, I want to thank Attorney Schneider when we came here two weeks ago and turned in our resolution. He went ahead and transformed it into the official format, and I appreciate that very much. I spoke a lot two weeks ago, so I don't think I need to speak much, but I handed out everyone a packet of information. And the packet of information that I gave you included our, the facts that, that we talk about all the time. And I, and I asked everyone on the council to go ahead, if you would, and try to look at the data, try to go back to the Tier One study, even if it's just the summary, and look at the facts that I have in there, and the Tier Two and the facts. Those are all facts that I'm using and have been using when I present to your council, when I present to the Dubois County Council, the Dubois County Commissioners. They're not made up, they're not exaggerations, they're not projections or assumptions like you see in the, throughout the draft environmental statement, the final environmental statement, and also the Tier Two document. So thank you for your time, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Still got, we've got about eight minutes and about 15 seconds, I believe. Nine minutes, I'm sorry.
Everybody else is so tall. So I've got, my name is Teresa Kendall, I live in Jasper, and I am a person who's lived here quite some time, but I'm sure everybody knows I'm not from here. I do want to bring up the idea of, I've said this publicly many times, I am from that Kokomo area that Colton brought, brought up. Kokomos got a very high unemployment, I mean, a very low unemployment rate because Chrysler has moved all of their manufacturing facilities there. Has nothing to do with the roads that are there. The roads that are there have been there forever, and that's made no improvement in Kokomo. So if you drive any kind of a Chrysler product, it's made in Kokomo. So anyway, bypasses kill towns, just plain and simple, they kill a town. When you put a bypass around any town, whatever it is incorporating, whatever it closes off, it's going to, that area right there is going to die, and everything from there will move over here to that. And then you come up with cities like Kokomo that has the original 31 that went through it, then they built another bypass, they built a bypass in the 60s, they built a bypass in the 70s, they built a bypass in the 80s, and the last one was in the 90s. The bypass, 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 and the town has slowly died as it goes along. And all those bypasses go to the same point, and at that point that, where all those bypasses are is where this giant Chrysler facility is, because they still get on 31 and they can still get to where they want to go. When people talk about connectivity and this road being connecting, whatever it's going to connect, 31 has excellent connectivity. I was just on it today, and I got up to 69 with no problem, and I got back down here with no problem. And it would be the same amount of time if that road is there. So one of the things I think we need to look at is the big picture, is that a bypass drastically alters a community. Think about the little bit of bypass that happened in Jasper back in the 80s. All that bypass did was make a road go closer to specific business that a businessman wanted to have done. It didn't really do anything to help the peaceful of Jasper, and it destroyed the farmers and homeowners that lost their land. So we have to think very carefully, very, very carefully, what we're going to do to the people. The RDA wants to talk about all the business and how the business is what we need. We do need the business, and we do need for people to stay here and work, and I understand that they need people. That road isn't going to bring them here. That road isn't going to do anything. It's not going to help traffic in Jasper or in Honeyburg. Who's going to go from, get on that road to go from Honeyburg to Walmart in Jasper? It takes you way out of the way. They're not going to do it. They'll still drive through 31, 231, excuse me, I'm so sorry about that. What this comes down to is, is this worth destroying the lives of the people that live here in Dubois County? Is it worth that? Would you be willing to give up any, anything that you have so that you can make it easier for some person to get supposedly have the connectivity that already exists? It's just going to shave off maybe five minutes. So the important thing to remember is the big picture and the long-term effects, just like they spoke of. Jasper has grown without that road. Honeyburg has grown without that road. If you remember the census of 2020, there were only two places in the state of Indiana that the population grew. That was Indianapolis and Dubois County. We were the only ones that grew in 2020, and that had nothing to do with whether we have a road or we don't have a road. People come here to live because this is a great place. I left Indianapolis to move here because it's a great place. And why, I think one of the things that we have to remember as people who are leaders in the, in your community and in the county, and those of us that are trying to preserve the life that is that is fantastic in DuBois County, it can't be replicated anywhere else. Business is important, but we've got to remember, people don't live to work, they work so they can live, and this is a great place to live, and that road is really going to destroy the quality of life here.
We'll have about three minutes here, so.
Name's Lee Oglar, lifelong resident of Huntingburg. Actually worked at OFS for several years, have several $2 bills, thank you, for my birthdays. Thanks for that. I'm all for growth and improvement, I think everybody is, depending on the circumstances. But I'm completely against the new terrain highway. Not sure why the county council or any resident would want the people going through town to pass the stellar community and Fourth Street alone. It doesn't make any sense for what we've been doing. If it was west of Holland or west of Ireland by certain people's houses or properties, it would completely change certain people's opinion. They wouldn't want the road either. I think it's fitting that a member of the RDA said there's no conflict of interest. It's right there. Whether it matters or not, could be a conflict of interest itself. A wise man once told me, "If you have to tell someone about your donations, you did it for the wrong damn reasons." Thanks for your time.
My name's Marissa Dirkles. I haven't spoken, I don't have much, I haven't spoken to you all yet, but I have been to the City Council of Jasper and the County Council of DuBois County. Somebody asked what has changed since you all first supported it. One of the big things I can think of that's been in the news over the last month is you guys would have to take over 231. That's a huge expense that I don't think was very clear when they started the Tier One study, that, hey, if we go down this road, you guys are going to have to take over 231. So that's something that, as financial stewards of the taxpayer money, you guys will have to consider. And then, state of Indiana doesn't have even enough money to maintain the existing road, so how can we build a new road? Economic impact, it's talked about, all the businesses that this would bring in possibly and new people, well, okay, then it's not just about a road, because once the road's built, then they're going to build neighborhoods, then they're going to have companies coming in and taking people's land. It's not going to stop with the road. It's just a land grab, land grab, land grab, like Teresa was talking about. It's just going to keep moving out, moving out. And then the purpose and need that was stated to the public in the public meetings back in, what, 2019, I think it was, they changed along the way. So we were told one thing, I know that it was talked about a lot, that it would improve safety and congestion. Well, no, actually, when they looked at it, it's not, and that's why they took that out of the, it's a secondary goal of the purpose and need now, and it's not a primary goal like it was originally. But that's how they got people to kind of agree with it, right, was that it was about safety and congestion, but that's not what it's about. And then, yes, there are appointed officials to other boards, but the RDA is a little bit different in that it takes 70%, 75% of the total members to get rid of an RDA member. Every city, town, county in the RDA has a vote, and 75% of them have to vote that way, because each appointed member of an RDA doesn't represent a specific unit. So I got those notes from my sister, because I don't understand all that. But just some other things to consider. Thank you for listening and considering all of our input.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the council members or any questions? Nothing from anybody. We do have two resolutions, we have three options there, I guess. One of those is to prove, if you want to explain the two resolutions, and we need to give them a number.
Essentially, you've all seen the resolutions, they've been distributed for some time now. But each of the resolutions, the resolution in favor and the resolution opposed, recites various factual positions for their position. The resolution in favor merely resolves that the city of Huntingburg supports the efforts by Midstates Corridor Regional Development Authority and NDOT in connection with their efforts to study, develop, and construct the Midstates Corridor in DuBois County. After reciting various facts, at least versions of facts, the resolution in opposition resolves that the common counsel of the city of Huntingburg, Indiana opposes and will no longer support the continuation of Midstates Corridor New Terrain Highway project and any other alternative other than the previously identified improvements for the existing US 231, nor will it authorize any additional dollars to this project. Those are the two resolutions. I won't read the entire resolutions unless you want me to, but you've had them, they each recite their own versions of the facts to support what they're asking. But again, obviously, the resolution in support just resolved to continue the council's support of the Midstates Regional Corridor and its efforts to develop, study, develop, and construct. And the resolution opposed is a resolution resolving that the city should oppose any further support for the continuation of the Midstates New Terrain Highway, or any similar alternative other than the improvements to the US 231.
The options are to make a motion to accept one or the other, or nothing, I guess, or that.
Or you could table, and you may have further considerations, a study that you want to do on your own.
I think I would like to make a motion to table it. I feel like, especially with Jeff not being here, I think this is a huge decision that I would like us to, to everybody to have a voice in.
And I still have a lot of questions about the construction. As mentioned, I'm sure we can't afford to take over 231, so we need to figure out how that's going to get paid for. So there's a lot of open questions I have before I can say yea or nay. Okay? So I agree with Pam, I can table.
I might also encourage councilors to read the information packet that Mr. Schroeder gave you, as well as the information packet that the Property Rights Alliance Group gave, I think it was in May. It sets out back, at least, the support for their various positions. It may raise some questions in your own mind that aren't being answered, that you feel like you need an answer to.
I agree. I agree with Pam and Glenn to table this. We still have some, a lot of questions yet that's going on. Yeah, I think there's negotiations still going on right now between the mayor and the council, and the county in Jasper. So until we get some more information yet, I think we're still too early to say yes or no tonight. Who knows how this vote could happen, it could be a two and two, and 05 person's not here to break the tie. So because of that reason, I'm going to make a motion to table to a later date.
Got a council person voting, made that, made it your second to table?
Yeah, my second, yes. Okay.
Sure, I've never taken a vote to table, but I guess we'll do that. Do we hear all those in favor of tabling?
I.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries to table the decision, so further information's available. I encourage both sides to reach out to our council members to, you know, give them all the information. I do believe, you know, one thing that I'm happy about this has not been a back-and-forth argumentative sessions that we've had with either group. I feel, you know, I want to thank you for that, for being professional in the meetings, for being able to present your facts passionately. All of you are passionate, and when passion starts hitting, it starts hitting hurts sometimes. I can feel the passion in your voices and know that you're serious about what you're saying, so we will table it.
And it is a decision that we are not taking lightly, so I think that's the reason why I feel more comfortable tabling it, because we do, we want to make sure that the decision we make, we do with good conscience and one that we feel good about.
Thank you. Any other council items?
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Got first and second all those in favor? Any opposed? Joining at 6:30 PM? Thank you, everyone.